Alright, everyone, let's get going. I will call the meeting to order for July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Attendance at the start of the meeting is a hundred percent with councillor Hughes and councillor Mantsky attending virtually. We do have an amendment to the agenda. So originally scheduled for a public hearing for land use by law nineteen has been pulled at the request of the applicant and they had requested we move to September second. So that public hearing could be September second, potentially the sixteenth. And thank you, everyone, for getting the word out that that public hearing was cancelled. And other than that, I have, there's no more additions. You're reaching for your mic, Mr Fletcher.
No, I'm simply detangling my.
Okay, okay.
Space, I apologize.
So other than that one change to the agenda with the elimination of seven point one, I will go to councillor Mackay for a motion.
All right, that the July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five agenda be adopted as amended with the deletion of item seven point one by law nineteen slash two thousand and twenty-five land use by law schedule eight. Amendment for the portion of two, five, three, three, one township road five, four, four and two, five, three, two, one township road. Five, four, four, first, second and third readings. This is much harder than I normally.
Call for the vote? Voting is closed. And that passes by majority. We have a couple of registered speakers. I know Tony's here, Tony Drew it and is Al with us too? Oh, there he is. So Bless is here, they would like to talk about current activities and concerns. So are you both speaking? Okay, go on up whenever you're ready. And I received a copy of the bird guide, so you didn't have to throw it at me.
They'll just lie over there.
That's awesome. Alright, whenever you're ready.
Okay, well, thank you very much for allowing us to speak. It's, I think it was last September, the last time we spoke at the area structure plan. Second, the third hearing, I think. Anyway, it was recently announced that the province will be providing the city with two point eight million dollars to be used for upgrades to the Carrot Creek corridor on the west boundary of the city. We're not objecting to the project, but we do have some concerns and some suggestions that we wanted to bring before you. Carrot Creek is currently a very slow running waterway. It's not experienced any significant erosion. And we think that the two point eight million dollars would not be needed if it was just a routine environmental maintenance project. We believe that it's actually really the first stage of converting Carrot Creek into a major storm sewage outfall channel. It will eventually accommodate the discharge from more than a thousand acres of new development on the west side of the city. The St Albert West area structure plan specifies that there will be six stormwater management facilities discharging directly into the creek. Bless didn't object to that ASP at the last meeting, and that was mainly because the final draft of the ASP included several revisions and additions that had been proposed and supported by Bless. The final draft shows a conservation reserve and a wildlife setback along the east side of Carrot Creek, and that's in additional to the environmental reserve. That was a major addition, in our opinion. We believe that these, those additional designations should ensure that any revisions or upgrades to Carrot Creek will be carried out in an environmentally appropriate fashion. The ASP document actually also specifies that the west side of Lakeview district will not occur or not be developed until phase three of the whole area, which means that it's several years away. We feel it is essential that any modifications to the creek be designed and installed in a fashion that is fully coordinated with the future parks, with the future trails and other environmental features that are planned for the adjacent neighborhoods. For these reasons, we are now requesting that there be a full public involvement prior to any major alterations or upgrades taking place within the Carrot Creek corridor. That should include at least one full-scale open house where the details of the project are explained to the public and where the public are invited to submit their input and suggestions. As I said at the beginning of the presentation, we're not objecting to the project. However, we feel it's very important that the public be fully informed about it, and that should happen prior to any of the work being started. And that is what would have happened prior to the start of any private sector development, including building the storm sewer outfalls and so forth. It is also what previously happened on other city of St Albert projects, and that includes the Gray Nuns area where there was significant public involvement before the work was done. That's basically the main thing that I want to cause trouble about, as was mentioned earlier. And but we're not, we're not objecting to the project, we're just saying that there should be proper public consultation, and if it's done properly, it could be a real improvement to the area. And I think Al, well, have you any questions? And Al is here to answer any questions about what else has been going on with Bless.
You, you said, just at the end of, you said another project that did get significant public involvement, and I missed which one.
The Gray Nuns area, yeah, there were several public meetings, we had back and forth discussions and so forth. Recently, when we wanted to have a similar public involvement, we went to the planners about the trail extension that's now being built across. Again, we're not objecting to it, but we did think there should be proper public consultation. The answer that we got this time is, oh, we had the public consultation when we did the Gray Nuns. So we don't need to have it now this time. So that sort of put us aware that it's possible that things are going to be built with this Carrot Creek project that do have significant bearing on future development of the area and making sure that it's not, it is going to be done in an environmentally friendly way, but in a way that takes into account what is planned for the area that's going to be draining into it.
Alright, I'm going to open up to questions of council, but I kind of suspect the questions might be of our administration. But does anyone have any questions? Do we lose councillor Hughes? Oh, there she is. No questions?
No, I just, I'm burning through data, that's all there, that's why I was just. If I don't need to be on, I wasn't going to be on, that's all. But I understand, no.
Councillor Mackay has a question, go ahead.
Yeah, you didn't drag out all the way here just for some good looks and humor, so. Al, what else, you used to have summer students, interpretation programs and all that, is that still ongoing with Bless?
Yeah, our, the summer program has just started. It has been incredibly successful. The young lady that we were lucky enough to have has taken a third term. And as a result, it's starting to be picked up by the education side of it, the schools. And that dovetails with the sample of the new bird book that we, that I dropped for you. Ten bucks is yours, but it's, the Aero Utilities step forward as well as the JBJ family. And they sponsored the last printing, it was two hundred and fifty books, and they were gone within thirty days. So the demand for it is substantial, and now that St Albert has been recognized as a, as a bird-friendly town, and they were asking for projects that would represent this. I can't think of a better thing to invest in, in something like this. It's been redone almost to go into the schools, because it's been very successful. So our program so far, we're only little, we can't do that much, there's not that many of us, and we don't have any money. But other than that, it's, life is fair. So that's, this has been a real success story for us, and I think you will see a lot of the public sector maybe stepping forward to do it. But again, you still depend on the grants from the city and from the province, and for that, we thank you. The other, the good news that we've got is, we started out with the QR codes and a little sign that said, look, if you see something, not legal particularly, but say a broken, a broken board on the boardwalk or cement that's out of place. Just scan the QR code and it brings you directly to a piece of paper that says, here, who are you, where is it? And away you go. And it's been remarkably successful as well. We have had it up for sixty days, sorry, yeah, about sixty days. And I think we've had about thirty-five entries, a lot of which asked for the newsletter and to be members, but also animals that are injured, areas that need to be cleaned up. A lot of it doesn't come to the city here, most of it goes directly to the, to the, to the parks. You know, clean the toilets, was that a big surprise? Not really. But you know, there's, there's lots of them where, where there has been construction garbage left north of Gray Nuns. That's actually city of St Albert, but it comes in through this. So that, incidentally, we'll go back and do a second try with parks to see whether or not we can encompass this within the St Albert region as opposed to just on the, just on the park area. Questions?
No, I look for it, and I'm, as a chair of Aero Utilities, it was an honor to actually contribute, so I appreciate the shout out. And actually, I found one sitting beside me here, so, oh, is it yours? I guess I don't have to pay ten dollars now.
No, you don't. Worth about you guys paying, you know, it's our, it's our little blessing to make sure that you get it that way. But Dan Stoker did a huge amount of work, as well as Miles Constable. They redid the, the birds, they put in a map that chose where you can find them. And more important, it gives a number of stars beside the birds that are difficult to see, or if they're easy to see, one star. So now you can take your grandkids or your kids out, and you can find the birds. And in the back of it, it's a little contest that allows you to track the number of stars you get. So if you didn't get gold stars when you were a kid, you could now get gold stars with Bless.
My wife has my fridge full of gold stars of all the work that I have to do. The, you talked about birds, do we have a, do we have anybody monitoring the fish population that's in Big Lake?
Which one?
The health of it? I mean, the fish population.
Fish, okay.
Yeah.
There's adventure.
Do we have, do we have any involvement with that with Bless, or is that just all through?
That's, that's really.
Duck, yeah.
Yeah, they do water monitoring, but the mod of water monitoring isn't fish. But what I will do is I'll bring that up, and I would suspect fish and wildlife would have more to do with that than, than us. Like I say, here, it's a very active birding club with Riverlock Fifty-Six and with Dan Stoker as president of that area. And it's, like you say, this, this has been remarkable. We've been approached by the education division of the city of, of the separate school board for Edmonton and also for the county of Sturgeon. So it's, it's proven to be really a gem. Thank you.
How come no hummingbirds?
I'm sorry?
How come no hummingbirds in here?
I was tempted to say because I didn't know the words, but I wouldn't do that, that's.
Actually, it is specifically about Big Lake, and we actually had a discussion about that.
Yeah.
About, and there aren't any hummingbirds. And, you know, we've got them in our backyard and so forth, but not around the Big Lake area.
Okay.
Not the sort of environment where you're likely to see them.
Probably not. I like hummingbirds. Councillor Kille, do you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Relative to Carrot Creek plan, my recollection of the documentation we reviewed a while back on this was that it was a lot to do with bank stabilization, erosion control, looking at some of the bridge water flows, repairing area, and documenting and, and work along those lines, which was, seemed to be, if I could, very operational in, in sense. And that it, because it was a, a grant, we were following all the requirements in the, in the grant application that we put in to receive that, that money. Did, did you, were you able to review those documents or just the council project charter that was presented?
Don't even know if those, all we've seen is that basically the reports in the newspaper are about the, the fact that there's two point eight million dollars. In my experience, you know, and I frankly, I've designed storm sewer outfalls and storm sewer treatment facilities. And I've been out there to Carrot Creek, it doesn't need any major stop stabilization at the moment, in fact, it's almost the opposite, it's, it's full of debris and so forth.
Yeah.
It does need some cleaning out, but that will not cost two, two point eight million dollars. And, you know, when it's changed into being the main storm outfall, which is what's going to happen, then it will have to have a stability, slope stability. But at the moment, there isn't any vital need for it at all. And I, we have to be a bit cynical and not thinking that there isn't a connection between them suddenly allocating two point eight million dollars to what's going to be the storm sewer outfall and the fact that the area structure plan specifying it as a sewer outfall was approved just nine months ago, so, you know, that's out of logic anyway.
Okay, so thanks for that clarification, it's just wanting to understand where the gap, potential gap of information from. Now, now I have a better sense that it's what you read in the paper versus there is a lot of other detail, obviously, that administration would have done to get the grant and be compliant for the grant and report back to it, and all, all of those things that might be.
It would be exactly the sort of thing that if there's a public meeting and a public hearing or something like that, or any sort of public we'll be looking for. And that's what we were hoping has been done and will continue to be done before the work is actually started.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to understand the gap in, in, in information there, thank you.
Alright, I see no more questions. We have one more speaker, the Chamber of Commerce, and then we'll open it up for questions of our administration. So Angie? Angie, and your game?
They're the experts.
Go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Alright, so good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am Angie Hampshire, Chair of the St Albert District Chamber of Commerce, and I brought my sidekicks Jane and Leslie. And I am representing the St Albert Farmers Market and the St Albert District Chamber this afternoon. Just to share a quick snapshot of the incredible momentum we are seeing at the farmers market. And first of all, and most important, to express our most sincere gratitude for the city's continued support. We are currently experiencing the highest attendance numbers in our forty-two year history. Just two Saturdays into our season, our guestbook, where visitors stop in and sign, was already full. The reach of this event is truly remarkable. We've welcomed guests from Quebec, Ontario, Newfoundland, Labrador, British Columbia, Manitoba and Northwest Territories, regional areas such as Beaumont, Leduc, Parkland and Edmonton, as far as the US, Hong Kong, England, Australia, Thailand and Mexico. This isn't just a market, it is a powerful tourism driver and often the first stop for visitors in our community. More importantly, the market has become a launchpad for local business success. Each Saturday, two hundred and eighty-five businesses set up shop. Many of them startups, testing ideas, building a customer base, and then growing right in front of our eyes. Some have since opened brick and mortar stores or have developed large online followings thanks to the visibility and the loyalty the market has generated for them. Beyond business and tourism, this market plays a vital role in our community development and giving back. Each week, our vendors and volunteers support the St Albert Food Bank with fresh food donations. Our busker program supports the St Albert music Rotary Music Festival, helping fund music education and performance opportunities for youth. These busking spaces also give emerging local talent, especially young performers, a live audience to practice in front of, helping them build confidence and stage presence. This year, our team plans to sell postcards that feature the market with proceeds supporting stop abuse in families, so safe. All of this, from economic development to community giving, has made possible, has been made possible because of the city's longstanding support. From council to administration, to the incredible team in economic development and all of your other departments, your partnership has helped this event grow into something truly special. But with growth, it has come with challenges. This is the largest reoccurring event in the city, running eighteen to nineteen weeks, depending on the year, covering multiple downtown streets and now welcoming up to thirty thousand visitors each week. This footprint, the logistics and the operational needs are unique. To put it in perspective, if even half of those attendees are St Albert residents, that's roughly twenty percent of our city's population attending the market every week. This market is a point of pride for our community, the benchmark for other municipalities, and a magnet for regional tourism and economic activity. We're often said, we've often said, build off this momentum. With tens of thousands of people already here, it's a golden opportunity to showcase downtown attractions and culture. We are proud of the legacy that this market represents and excited about what's ahead. With your continued support, we can ensure the event continues to grow, adapt and deliver economic and community value for St Albert. We just really, we, it's, it's just like we said, with growth, it does come with challenges, we know your staff get to hear it. My team back here, the, the farmers market team, they, they really get to hear it. But when we look at the vast amount of people that come into this community and look forward to it as a tradition, it allows us to really put in perspective that the thousands that we do get to bring joy and community to really kind of overpowers the one or two complaints that we on a weekly get to deal with. But we really wanted to just take a minute and share our appreciation and gratitude because we know that that can get taxing on city staff, and we appreciate it, and we are doing our best to work with your teams and try to minimize some of the situations that come up on a regular basis. And we thought it was just time to give you guys an update. So we thank you for your time and for standing behind this iconic St Albert tradition. That's all.
Sorry, that's awesome. I'm so glad that we have it, that it's in our downtown. Appreciate you guys coming on the downtown tour too, just talking about it. Councillor brought it as a question, and then I'll, I'll ask a question at the end, but it'll be about the winter market.
Okay.
So, but I'll go to Wes first, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for coming. You couldn't have said it better. I, you know, the farmers market is really quite an attraction to the city of St Albert, but it, it's a jewel for every resident here as well. The question I get most often is, how do I get in? And, and I've always heard it's extremely competitive to get a slot. Is it just as competitive today as it was in the past?
I would probably argue, and I'll let my staff speak to that, it's probably more competitive, but I'm gonna let James say that.
It is very competitive, but we also try to have a balanced market. So for example, if I have twenty people selling sourdough bread, nobody's going to have a great day. So we do look at what people are selling, what their product is, and we try to make sure that we don't have twenty people selling the same item or food. Now, we do have a lot of produce, but I mean, that's what a farmers market is all about. So, yes, for example, if you were selling jewelry or candles, what's another, or wood products? Bakers, we have so many. Right now, I have three hundred people on my waiting list to get into the market. But it's not just a matter of being on the waiting list, it's what kind of product do you have that would be unique to the market? And that's how we choose.
I, you handled it well, I, I, I love the, the stats, so when people come, can ask, I'll just repeat that, and I always send them to you anyway, so.
And we also adhere to the bake it, create it, grow it. Yeah.
Bake it, create it, grow it.
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough.
I think it's important because we've been getting a lot of, like, questions, well, how do you pick and what does this mean? So first and foremost, we are part of like the St Albert Farmers Market Association. So we have actually policies that we have to adhere to and agree to abide by, by, by being a part of that. And then on top of it, like she said, we have like a three hundred percent waiting list, but your category has to have somebody be willing to get, like, to leave us before you, you're not just a general waiting list. So we could have a baker that might have to wait till one of the twenty bakers gives up their spot. I can say that as the Chair of the Chamber this year, I really asked the staff, well, asked Shelley, to ask her staff to make sure that our policies were current and that we were in alignment with the rest of the chamber's policies.
Committee, committees, yes.
Oh, yeah, that too, this year, we actually started a
Marketing.
Marketing.
Market committee, yeah.
Yeah.
The market committee is to help decide who gets into the market when it comes down to those last few people, just to keep it as fair as possible.
Fair enough, I appreciate it. Bake it, create it, grow it.
It's actually make it, bake it. Make it, bake it.
Oh, make it, bake it.
Sorry.
Fair enough, I'll have to.
It's not fake it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you very much.
Councillor Mackay?
Yeah, thanks for coming, you know how much I enjoy it, I see Jane or Laurie almost every Saturday morning. Kind of a couple of questions, I might, you know, there are three hundred, three hundred vendors on the waiting list. I know Edmonton's recently moved, and please don't throw things. Edmonton's recently moved to two nights or two, two days. Is there an opportunity to, and look, I mean, and I realize, again, you're stretched really thin.
You're trying to kill me, Ken.
No, I'm not, I know the amount of work you put in and I know what you put up with, so, no, I'm not trying to kill you. But I mean, I, is there an opportunity to look at other, like a Wednesday night or a Thursday night or something where maybe not on the same scale, obviously, but something where we could?
We have looked at that, and we are in talks for next May to have a night market for one day, just to see how it goes, but it's also getting the cooperation of the downtown businesses. So, because we don't want to take away from them, so we are looking at that for next May, just to see how it will go.
Yeah, it, it, that, I'm glad to hear that you're working in collaboration with, with the Downtown Business Association because I know some nights are quieter than other nights down there, so there's some opportunity to maybe build on, on that. The other one, and I, I also wanted to recognize that well, some, you leave some spaces open for nonprofit and agencies and the like.
We do.
And, and I really appreciate that, I know the policing committee has taken advantage of that, so thank you for kind of allowing that because it does give a lot of people a, a, a point of entry that they just wouldn't ever see before. So the other one is, how do you coordinate? I know this is a bugaboo, how do you coordinate and collaborate with other events that might be taking place? Is there a go-to person within the city or within the special event? Like, I'm thinking Rockin' August on that one Saturday that just brings in, you've got thirty thousand people down there, they've got fifteen to forty thousand people going down there on the two days. You've got Arden Events, how, how does that all work or not?
We coordinate, well, we definitely check the city's event calendar. And I mean, Leslie has been doing the market longer than I have, so she has been able to tell me what to expect and when to expect it. The Arden Theater is, we do try to coordinate with them to bring the cars in. I bet doing it right now with the amount of people that we are getting into the market to stop pedestrians at one o'clock on a Saturday afternoon, and we have fifteen thousand people. We've had a couple of near misses, it always makes my heart kind of stop. And to have the staff stop and bring a vehicle in, it is, it's tough, I'm not gonna lie. For me, it's a safety issue. I mean, the last car that I brought in, I actually had a small child dart across the vehicle, even though we had the loudspeaker saying, please move to the side, and we had all staff members surrounding the vehicle. It's, it's a safety issue. But the Arden does let us know when their vehicle is coming in. I guess the problem there is that, I guess, the timing is, is kind of hard for us. Coordinating with the other city events, we just make sure we know what's going on. For example, when Lyons Park, I believe, had the Pride picnic. Coordinating with the other city events, we just make sure we know what's going on. For example, when Lyons Park, I believe, had the Pride picnic, we made sure that our staff were aware because we had a lot of people coming in and asking questions. I believe this last weekend, there was a, it was tails and it was the pet one, which is why we also had a lot of dogs through the market, which we do not allow. So most people were, you know, they just didn't know. So they were, but you know, we just make sure we know what's going on in St. Albert as well to kind of coordinate. And sometimes we'll need extra staff on for those days, for sure.
I'd like to speak a little bit to the coordination with Rockin' August. We actually share some of the fees associated with our park and ride and that sort of thing. We work with them for the garbages and we have a lot of people that we know that Shelley included that work with Rockin' August. So we do coordinate a lot of our timing and get our vendors in a little bit earlier so that they have more room for their parking for other events. We do not have a contact at the city. That would be a little bit helpful. I know last year when the mayor came for one of her events, we were also in there with some of our people. That is something that we could work on if we had. I don't know exactly how you'd like to go about that. Maybe that's something we can coordinate with Melissa to maybe get some of the smaller events that aren't publicized as much because we do go through all the media pages to find out what's going on so that we can, you know, I've given vendor lists to people who need extra vendors for their events down the street, or we've worked with them. Some of them have asked us for assistance on how to work with the barriers and stuff. So we've helped people with policies and helped them to get their events up and running a little bit smoother as well.
Thanks, and I probably should have started with this question, and it's a big topic when you have that many people downtown, thirty thousand people. I know we've seen the tragic events that have occurred in Vancouver, and how do we, are we looking at risk management, protocols, procedures? Are we working with the city, the RCMP, MES in relation to potentially mitigating some of that risk? Because I can, I mean, that's a very difficult job.
I, I'm gonna choose my words very cautiously out of the respect for the work that is being done. Especially, I don't want to say even especially, Tristan, I'm looking at you. I'm looking at you here. We want our attendees to be able to attend the farmer's market and feel safe and protected and be able to enjoy the experience that they have and that they've been able to safely do for years. Has the world changed? Yes. Do we recognize that this is now a risk? One hundred percent. Are there meetings that are happening right now behind the scenes so that we can continue that, to ensure that it's a safe event? Yes. Can we disclose any of those things? No. But rest assured, they've been addressed and we are actively working on it. And I think, given the dynamics of the world that we live in, it is now going to have to always stay as a constant topic of conversation between the police, the city, the chamber, and as it grows. And I mean, one of the things that Shelley and I talked about is even like all of the Instagram travel bloggers, the Alberta travel bloggers now, like they're all posting, come to St. Albert Farmer's Market. So we're getting all of this great publicity and people are coming down to it and our numbers are increased, but there is extra safety precautions that we're learning and we're working through. And yeah, it's, it's the thing.
Yeah, thanks. I wasn't, I didn't expect you to actually give me, I'm just very happy that you are, that's on your radar and that you're working, and that's all.
It is. Shelley's been in meetings. We're on it.
I figured so. Thanks.
But it's a good question, and it's important, but I, yeah.
All right, Councillor Killig, you're up next.
Thanks for coming in with that positive update. Forgot to mention two of my favorite financial impacts to the senior center and their wine and crepe garden, which is awesome, and the Legion beer and burger garden, which is awesome, and I have tried both, so. On the same day, yeah. But that leads me to the question, has the chamber looked at doing an actual financial impact assessment of what the farmer's market does? I know one was done years ago, but I wonder if that had been ever looked at as being updated.
No, I know that we want to update it, but the costs associated with it have been a little bit prohibitive. But I know, what was it? It was fourteen million, and that was in two thousand and fourteen, I believe, when our market was under two hundred vendors. So it has definitely caused a much larger impact. We would love to do another one of those reports, but that last one was done by the city. So the fees were not something that could hold us back, but this time we've looked into it and not yet have we found someone to do that in some way that we can afford.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So my question is about Christmas and if you guys have found a home yet?
Not yet. We have not. I did reach out to my contact at the city where I sent the application in in May. I have not heard back yet. I resent an email this morning asking, so we have not.
Okay, so but it's definitely not going to be at the Enjoy Center. Is that correct?
That is not definite.
It's not definite. We have not had the conversation with them.
Lately.
Lately.
Okay.
Yeah, so that will greatly impact
Hundred percent.
The look of our Christmas market and the length of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be unfortunate, but we're open for suggestions, options of where we might be able to put some, the winter market had how many vendors?
Yeah, so it's gone up to two hundred and fifty a week, and when it was here, I believe it was seventy.
Yeah.
So as much as we are applying to do it here, that it would be beneficial to the business community to be able to do it at a bigger location.
We're working on that.
All right, I'm still thinking, yeah.
Yeah, still working on that as well. Yeah.
Thank you for coming. Yeah, it's always nice to get good news updates.
Thanks. Have a great afternoon.
All right, Councillor, we're at the point in the agenda where we can ask questions of administration. So if there's any questions you had about other of Bless's presentation or the chamber, it's time. Who was there and then gone? Sorry, Councillor Killig, go ahead.
Yes, to administration, relative to the presentation from Bless, is, there seems to be just an information gap. Bless is a very active group, as we all know, in the city. And my question would be, is there an opportunity to either hold an open house on what the plans are for Carrot Creek? Or even an individual meeting with Bless to kind of fill in some of the gaps and give them a general overview?
Yeah, thanks very much, Councillor. We've got actually a pretty comprehensive team online here from engineering utilities and environment. And so perhaps if it's okay with you, in answer to your question, we'll sort of round the horn on some of this stuff and just address some of the concerns that were brought up and get to your question as part of that, if that's okay.
Yeah, maybe just a little detail on what the project is doing.
Absolutely. I think we can, a little bit of scale and scope, and then the plan as we go forward for that, which I believe should address your question. So I'll ask Ms. Myers, she's the head of engineer, or sorry, head of environment, to start, and certainly she can quarterback with the rest of the team.
Yep, I'm just going to pass it over to Mr. Reed, and he's going to talk about the scope and the need of the project.
Thank you, Megan. Through the chair to Councillor Killig. The scope of the project is how you outlined it earlier. It's basically bank stabilization and kind of erosion control for existing areas. The challenge we have with what Les had indicated is it's not for the outfalls or for the new areas, it's for the existing conditions that we do have. Right now, we're in, we're about to send out the RFP for the design to go forward for it. The design will have to meet all sort of environmental or ecological requirements and legislation that both our internal team and our engineering standards do control. So those things will have control over that. At this time, we don't have any funding planned for an open house, but we are willing to take any recommendations from Les as a group to kind of use those recommendations as the design does go forward. But at this time, we do not have any sort of scope or intent to have any public open house with regards to this project.
And so to your specific question then, Councillor, it's not our recommendation that we would do a fulsome public engagement on this, given the scope and scale, which is existing conditions, erosion control, notwithstanding the fact we do believe it's necessary. And so I certainly commit that we'd be happy to have a discussion with representatives from Bless, but not recommending a fulsome open house on this particular project.
Will you be, maybe it's not for you, one of your staff members consulting with even the Environmental Advisory Committee?
Ms. Myers, do you want us to take that?
Yeah, I mean, if the project manager wants to come and talk to the committee, that's something that we could definitely arrange if internally, I don't see any reason why not.
I think that the bottom line is that this will be done in accordance with all legislation, certainly with the environment for first and foremost in line, but it is not a deeply invasive or project, right? And so that's why, from our perspective, it's fairly routine.
I think it's some of them after the erosion control steps, like what changes are we doing to the creek and how is it going to link up to the storm and the park system and that? That is already approved area structure plan, which had a public hearing. Neighborhood structure plans will not get a public hearing. Do we have an ASP for that area yet?
No, Mayor, we don't. And so again, to speak to what Mr. Reed had mentioned, what they're looking at is kind of the operational factors of the creek. I think what we're hearing is the concerns or the level of interest is the long-term picture for the future of the creek.
Right.
And that is something that we have not, like, we haven't even started that work yet. So that's a future thing. And that's why when utilities and engineering are talking and environment are talking about this, it's more on the informing side of the spectrum as far as engaging the public rather than engaging that, like
Yeah.
like having meaningful engagement because this is technical, operational stuff to make the creek flow. It's not to talk about where we have accesses to the creek and what future uses and where we can put paths and all that. That's long-term, and we've got, Councillor Broadhead knows, we've got ideas about things that we could do with Carrot Creek, but that's an entirely different scope and scale.
Now, we're a long ways away from development along that creek.
Yes, that's like, yeah, probably decades out, I would say.
All right.
So what I heard then is because it's very, I mean, there is a gap in understanding, obviously, from reading the project was approved in the paper versus what, where we at, where we are at with the project. There could be a simple meeting with Bless to kind of close that information understanding and kind of get everybody on the same page, not a full public consultation, but at least help to to bring Bless, who's been a long-term partner with the city and Big Lake, up to speed in their knowledge, is what it sounds like.
Yes, Councillor, we'll absolutely be willing to have that meeting. Yep.
Excellent. Thank you.
Perfect. Councillor Mackay, a question?
Yeah, just in relation to the chamber's presentation and the opportunity that, well, first of all, we heard some incredible statistics and some opportunities for tourism and also future maybe economic development opportunities. Is there an opportunity to figure out a way to coordinate together or assign them a staff? I mean, I'm not saying, I don't want to come to a solution here, but I'm just saying, is there an opportunity to work with the chamber to identify a point, one point of contact that would be helpful?
Yes, Councillor.
Thank you.
That's it? Yes.
What more can I ask?
Okay. All right, any more questions on either of the presentations? You two online are good. Okay. All right, let's move on to consent. So we've got a few things removed, I understand. Eight point one for voting, eight point two for voting, eight point four, Natalie's going to propose an amendment, and eight point five, Shelley has pulled, and I'm not sure why, but eight point six is still there. So I need a motion to approve those few remaining things on consent. I'll just thank you, Councillor Jolly. I think that's it, yeah. That, no, at eight point three.
Okay, that the recommendations in the following agenda reports be approved, six point one, regular council meeting minutes of July two, twenty twenty five, eight point three, standing committee of the whole item, social development, policy CCS sixteen, and eight point six, internal audit, steering committee, cybersecurity, audit, recommendation, implementation, budget.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes unanimously. All right. Okay, so we just approved the minutes from July second on consent. There is no public hearing. Eight point one was pulled by Shelley for voting purposes, so Councillor Broadhead can get you to just make the motion and we'll vote.
I move that the updated vision and pillars of sustainability policy, C-CG-11, be approved.
Awesome. Call for the vote. Voting's closed, and that motion passes by majority with Councillor Mantsky and Hughes opposed. Eight point two. Councillor Jolly, you made the original motion. You want to do it again?
Sure. That policy CHR zero four, inclusion, diversity, equity, and accessibility entitled idea council policy be approved, that upon approval of CHR oh four, inclusion, diversity, equity, and accessibility, policy CHR zero three, inclusive hiring be rescinded.
Thank you for that. Call for the vote. Who are we missing? That motion passes by majority with Councillor Mantsky and Hughes opposed. Eight point three was on consent, which was the, so I'll read it in, that the revisions to the council policy CCS sixteen, social development policy provided as an attachment to the gender report entitled social development policy dated July eighth, two thousand and twenty five be approved, and that upon approval of CCS sixteen, council policy CCS fourteen, FCS program funding policy, and CS seventeen, youth development policy be rescinded. So that was approved on consent. Eight point four, Councillor Jolly pulled this off to make an amendment. Do you have it ready?
I believe Ledge has it ready. I haven't seen it yet.
We'll just put it up on the screen and in the chat. It's up on the screen, that policy CF SO five be amended to delete six point five and replace it with five in section fourteen.
All right.
That was my understanding of what the request was. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Okay, I see no one wanting to ask any questions, so I'll accept the amending motion and let you go.
Yeah, just really briefly, we had a great discussion last week about this. Administration was recommending six point five. Councillor Mackay, thank you for kind of proposing that five percent mark. And so this is to bring this back up to the five that was proposed last week.
Thank you. Councillor Hughes.
Thank you. Councillor, I understand that this might be seen as a compromise, but the reality is that keeping at three point five just allows a conversation to happen. So what we're basically saying now is a five percent tax increase is probably comfortable. A four point nine nine would also not be up for discussion. And the three point five, I understand, would probably allow a threshold to happen because our policies have changed. But that doesn't necessarily mean that we have to say that a five percent tax increase is now acceptable because our policies have changed. So as a council, when we go to budget, it's our job to try to keep those tax increases as low as possible, to make it as affordable as possible. And if we start limiting ourselves unnecessarily, we actually can't have those conversations. It doesn't stop us from being able to have the debate. It doesn't stop us from being able to even not bring forward the motion altogether. It just gives us more latitude to allow us to have that debate when it's at four point eight or four point nine nine without saying that we're in contravention of our own policies. So I'm asking Councillor just if they would please consider keeping it at three point five. And that would just allow us to have a better discussion and allow councils of the future to be able to have more control over those final tax increases. have more control over those final tax increases and not simply say a five percent tax increase going forward is now an acceptable tax increase. I think that a lot of people are really hurting with the constant inflation. And we tying our hands like this is just taking more tools out of our own box to be able to reduce it below five percent. Because the policy isn't just that at five percent you can decrease it, it's that you can't decrease it to below five percent. So if it was at five point one, the current policy is that you could reduce it to five, not to three point four or four point eight or anything else. And so that, that by changing that, we're actually limiting ourselves and basically saying that anytime it's below five, it's wonderful, and we're not going to do anything further about it. And if it's above five, we're only going to decrease it to five. So by keeping it to three point five, it actually gives us a lot more room to reflect both the times of the day, what's happening with the current economy and different types of events that happen. And it allows us to use our, all the tools to the max capacity and, and really plan accordingly. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else on debate? Seeing none, anything to close, Counselor Jolly?
Yeah, just really briefly, you know, Counselor Hughes, I think you and I agree about most of this, this policy, including trying to keep the tax increase as low as possible. The year before I was elected, taxes in St. Albert or the tax rate decreased, which really has created a lot of challenges for us over the last two terms, because we have such a significant pressures in terms of provincial downloading of costs, in terms of our, you know, our, our growth capital deficit. And I would, I would love to see this five percent in this policy be that fire under the, the next council, really encouraging them to make decisions that are keeping that take a tax rate in mind and trying to keep it as low as possible. So that, that five percent, you know, helps, helps with the, the motivation to, to understand that we need to do things differently if we want to keep it low. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed, and that motion passes with myself, Counselor Jolly, Counselor Kilik, and Mackay in favor. So now we need to make this same motion as amended, correct?
Correct. We'll just throw it up on the screen.
It's on the screen?
No, sorry, we will just throw it up momentarily.
Are you willing?
That policy C F S, oops.
Amendments to the following policies be approved.
That amendments to the following council policies be approved, C F S oh five budget and taxation guiding principles as amended, and C F S oh one financial reserves.
All right, I accept that motion. Anything further on that?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Counselor Hughes, is your hand up from before or is it new?
No, it's new. Thank you. Yeah, I just want to clarify, we keep hearing that the tax increases were low in the past, which has caused the tax increases to be higher today. And that's just not true. The tax increases from each year are individual because we lowered the taxes in any year does not mean that the debt that came on place this year or the increased staffing that happened this year was reflective from not having a tax increase in past years. So I just wanted to clarify that because we keep hearing that the taxes are low one year, they're going to be a lot higher the following, and that's not the case. The reality is that the staffing is increasing quite, quite quickly, actually, not just in budget, but throughout each, throughout the year, we keep getting additional staff increases outside of budget. And that's been noted how frequently they're happening, but beyond that, the tax increases for each year are not reflective of this. We would have had the tax increase of four point six or three point nine or whatever it is. It would have been that even if the tax increases were high four years ago, because the demands for this year were not reflective and changed because of happened three or four or five years ago. So I just wanted to clarify that and I'm actually going to be voting against this. I just, I, I do not feel comfortable with the tax increase acceptance of five point five percent. And I, I don't think that most people in St. Albert are expecting a council to say that a five percent tax increase is acceptable and to limit the ability to reduce it because of, and saying we're going to do something different. I, I believe that I've done everything I possibly can to reduce those taxes in every other way, shape, and form. And limiting ourselves even in this opportunity, I think is just not, it's not something that our taxpayers were looking forward to or thinking that would be fair. That's it. Thank you.
Counselor Mackay?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. And I think what's important that we don't get lost in this whole thing is this isn't really around updating and cleaning up a lot of our policies, not just focusing on the assessment growth piece, but also really ensuring that our policies are current, they're not irrelevant, and they're non, they're not non-compliant with legislation. So I, I think it's important that we don't lose sight of what this entire report does. I mean, we've gone through many things. It's around making sure that the health of our reserves is in place so that we can utilize internal controls and also ensure that the reserves are there to offset potential that other inflationary costs. So just like everybody in, in business or in their private lives, we're all being impacted by inflationary costs. And that includes the city as well. So I think it's very important that we make sure that we have our financial house in order, and that's exactly what this motion is in really, as it relates to financial council policies. So.
All right, I see no one else. Anything to close, Counselor Jolly? Call for the vote. Voting's closed, and that motion passes with Counselor Bromansky, Broadhead, and Hughes opposed. All right. Sorry. We are now on to eight point five. Counselor Bromansky, you submitted that you pulled this, but you did not let us know why.
Yes, I do have questions, and it's my understanding that the chair is presenting the, for the arts committee as well today, so.
Okay, why don't we start with your questions?
Okay, so questions for administration are, when this was presented to the arts committee, it was presented as if, as this was already approved by council. And could you tell me the date that the project is to start and why it's imperative that the artist is chosen well ahead of the project?
Yeah, thank you very much. I will defer to, ahead of Kelly Services, who can take an initial stab at that answer, Ms. Wilkie. And certainly, Mayor, I would offer that the chair of the committee to, if I've got anything to add, but obviously that's.
Behind the pillar.
Yeah, so please go ahead, Ms. Wilkie.
Go ahead.
Thank you for the question, Counselor Bromansky. I do know that Emily is prepared to speak on behalf of the committee and what they reviewed, but also Jacqueline Blackwood is here on behalf of administration to discuss the presentation to the committee and identify an answer to your question. So I'll ask J C to please join us.
Just to note, sorry, Ms. Wilkie, just to note, these are questions that were not answered in committee. That's why I'm asking them now. So just for clarification there.
Um, I can answer the second, but I think the first question's for the overall capital project team. So would you like me to let them speak to the capital project first?
Oh, perhaps if you go ahead and, and start and finish your piece and then we can throw it over to them.
Okay, great. Um, so the capital project, Amanda's here, she'll speak to that. Um, but we're requesting funding so that the artist can be embedded on the project team. So the best public art projects tend to be artwork that's integrated into capital projects. So this allows the artist to be on the design team early on to determine opportunities for the integration of public art. So it's not an afterthought. So opportunities like artwork being embedded in the seating areas, the pathways, the stage. Um, we want to give the artist an opportunity to find those opportunities and then discuss with the capital project team on what best ways they can integrate their work. And then Amanda, I'll let you, if you're the one to speak to this project.
Uh, thank you very much, Ms. Blackwood. Uh, and thank you for the question, Counselor through the mayor. This project was originally approved in, as part of the new neighborhood development. So that's the project charter R E C R zero four nine as part of the two thousand twenty four budget deliberations at a conceptual level. That concept plan was completed early this year, so, and we shared with council in March and is available online. The project has contracted out a designer for the detailed design phase, and that is anticipated to start in August.
All right.
And the completion date of the project, please, or projected completion?
Oh, apologies for missing that, Counselor. Um, so the detailed design portion of the project is anticipated to be complete in approximately Q one of two thousand twenty six. We will be doing some public engagement post-election, so in that early winter, mid-winter, I guess, January of twenty six. Construction of this project is subject to further council approval through that R E C R zero four nine charter. At this point, based on the state of surrounding development, we do anticipate in requesting those funds for the two thousand twenty seven capital year.
Okay, and then, so the other question is, so the artist would be involved for a couple of years out and prior to final approval?
Yes, the artist would be involved. So ideally, if the funding for this project is secured, we would put a call out in the fall for an artist to join the project team so that they can collaborate with the overall project on community engagement, so that it's not something that's done afterwards separately from the overall project. And then they would work collaboratively, and then they would be on the project until the end. Projects like this with a budget like this don't typically take six months. They take upwards of three to five years. So depending on when the capital project ends, that's when the artwork would end.
Okay, and then my other question is, it's mentioned in the release, you know, the information, the prior information for this project. It was mentioned that it's three point one million dollars. And is the art of two hundred thousand included in that three hundred or is this separate?
This is separate.
Separate, okay. And it's also mentioned that it's a substantial size of an art project that would be recognized from the road. So is there any ideas on how big the project is? And, you know, this is, and what backgrunder that we have been provided through council is that this is probably one of the biggest projects for a park that we've done, and it's also, you know, a big ask for art. So I'm, I'm just trying to clarify that we have the timing exactly as it should be.
No, so this opportunity would allow an artist to identify a number of opportunities. It wouldn't just be one thing. So with that kind of budget, there could be an integrated artwork in the stage that, that is proposed at Midtown. There could be public art seating. There could be public art embedded in the pathway, like I said earlier. So it would be numerous opportunities that could be identified, not just one standalone artwork. And ideally, they would all be pieces that, uh, community members can interact with. They wouldn't just be something that you would stand and look at.
Okay, in the original release, it was also mentioned that it would be a large project that was recognized from the road. So I, I'm getting differences in, in.
What, I'm not sure what release you're speaking about.
It's on the city website and it was, or on the city rep site prior and explaining the project for, you know, future planning and such, so.
Oh, I think Amanda, you just showed her camera. This happened earlier before we were brought onto the project team, so she can speak to that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, Ms. Blackwood, and to you, Counselor Bromansky through the chair. Uh, so I believe you're speaking about the conceptual planning that was completed. This project does sit at the corner, um, so it's, so I apologize, I'll take a step back. The park itself is split into two pieces, uh, one that's north of Rondo, uh, I always get my directionality wrong on this site, I apologize. East of Rondo Drive and one that's west of Rondo Drive. That west portion will be on the corner of Real Drive and Leclerc Way, so quite a, quite a visible corner. In the conceptual planning, there is a highly visible, and we use large in terms of probably physical size as opposed to cost necessarily. So there's an opportunity there to really welcome people into the community. It'll be a really high-profile spot from a vehicle perspective. So the idea through the conceptual planning was to do something that was really eye-catching. That doesn't mean that the artist won't come forward with something different or have different ideas. But at conceptual level, that's what we mean by large, is just a very prominent location within the city and an opportunity to really kind of provide that really unique, inviting kind of piece of art that will welcome people into the park space.
Okay, and this is a grand park in the scheme of things, I guess, compared to what we've done prior.
Absolutely. So this is an urban square, um, which in our parks classification system is for those areas of, uh, high density and mixed use. Uh, we don't have any true urban squares in the city of St. Albert currently, um, but at a much larger scale, I will caveat this. Sir Winston Churchill Square downtown Edmonton is in the parks world, an urban square, an urban plaza. So that's kind of, um, not to, to that level of scale, obviously, um, but that's kind of the contextual framework around urban squares. Are these higher use, more focused on community performances and unique opportunities? So they're not your kind of standard neighborhood parks. They're quite different because of the surrounding context.
Okay, thank you. And my last question, I guess, would be for finance. What will be left in the reserve if this motion is approved?
Uh, I believe Suzanne is online. Go ahead, Suzanne.
Uh, through the chair to Counselor Bromansky. I don't have this right now, but if you give me five minutes, I will take a look and we'll find out.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And that's all my questions at this point.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Bromansky. Emily, will you hear just to answer questions? Did you have a presentation?
No.
And I apologize. Okay, okay. So Sheena and Shelley, just so you know, the chair is here to answer questions too, so go ahead, Counselor Hughes.
Thank you. So what, this is some, a pretty large project, like for finances and et cetera. And that area has limited parking. Like, really, as they say, they have street parking. It's quite minimal. Um, I've been through there, may, maybe thirty spots to cover a neighborhood of what, I think they're spending seventeen hundred people. So what was the thought process between trying to put something that was expected to be a heavy draw for other uses in an area that doesn't have parking to support it?
Yeah, thank you very much, Counselor. Amanda, I think perhaps we'll go to you first and we can go from there. Thank you.
Yeah, and I may ask my colleagues in planning to also kind of jump in. Again, from a parks perspective, this was designed as in, and designated through the area structure plan as an urban square. The intention is to serve the large volume of residents that will live right there because it is a high-density development surrounding the park space. We do also anticipate looking towards opportunities with the real business district, because areas where we might encourage performances or markets would be evenings and weekends, where perhaps there might be opportunity to work with, say, the Enjoy Center or U Line or other areas nearby with large parking lots. So certainly, parking was a, a heavy topic of discussion. But we do feel there's significant opportunity with the local community that's right there, as well as working with local businesses and neighbors to kind of accommodate parking in those kind of off areas as much as possible. But I can pass it off if Lenore has anything to add to that.
I'm not sure if Lenore's there or not. I guess as a follow-up, though, have we actually contacted?
She's there. Counselor Hughes, she's, Lenore, did you have something to add?
Um, no, I just want to confirm that that is the higher mixed-use area in Midtown, and so there is commercial areas. And so the, the idea is, yes, it's to serve the, the, uh, all of St. Albert, but with the intensity of residents that would be there, definitely serving that neighborhood also. So it, it's for a, all people to, to be able to attend it.
So, but the, the parking's very limited there. And have we actually talked to the other businesses to see if they wanted to or would be willing to share parking? Because, I mean, I know U Line is, um, they're, they have high security in their area. So I, I doubt that they would say, just go ahead and park there just because of the level of security that they do have. I don't know, the Enjoy Center also sometimes has events that are happening that, you know, parking can be quite challenging. So have we actually talked to see if there's actually overflow parking available? Because we're putting something in there as a major draw, not just for the, that neighborhood, but for the whole community. And yet we, we don't have the parking to support it for the rest of the community to actually use it. So have we talked to anybody to actually confirm that we have some actual, actual additional accommodation for this?
Uh, thank you for the question, uh, through the chair to Counselor Hughes. We have not yet that will be part of the detailed design process. Um, as I mentioned, we haven't started that yet. We'll start that next month. So we'll anticipate reaching out, ensuring that the planning and the programming that we've, uh, sorry, the programming that we've planned for this space can be supported by the surrounding neighborhood, is supported by local businesses and neighbors and, and things like that. Uh, we did do public engagement during the conceptual phase and didn't receive much of a response. Uh, so we are hoping with a little bit more information and a little bit more time and build out and things. Uh, so we are hoping with a little bit more information and a little bit more time and build out and things um that we will have more participation and we will specifically uh look towards those opportunities and business owners. Um, we did reach out, uh, we did invite, sorry, the Enjoy Center to participate as a landowner. Um, they did not in the first phase, but um we'll do uh another round of public engagement through the detailed design process uh to make sure that we can support the planned uses.
So let's say that we reach out and the supporting area businesses say, no, we do not want to use our parking lot for extensive use for city park usage. Um, you know, it costs them money to maintain their parking lot and the usage period wears it down. So if they say they did not, don't want to, are we going to change the design then? Or what is the intention?
Um, through the, sorry, through the Chair to Counselor Hughes. Um, we would certainly reassess whether there were other options, whether that intent of urban square still matched the surrounding context um and could be supported by the neighborhood. Um, I can't supre- presuppose unfortunately what the the neighborhood um will say at this time, and of course, things will build up around it and the context might change. There are always other opportunities to bring people into spaces. We are not anticipating this to be a large um performance space or anything like that. Um, so more uh not in the scale of of anything that occurs downtown, so still a little bit smaller in terms of scale. So things like park and ride and other options may be operationally viable, but we will continue to work with the surrounding neighborhood uh as well as our community services folks, uh our economic development folks um to make sure that whatever designs are done and absolutely if it all comes down to, sorry, this is not a viable use for this space because of these constraints within that kind of smaller neighborhood. We'll reassess and make sure that the park space still meets that urban square intent, but maybe slightly differently and focuses more on local uses.
Okay, so reeling to the art then, what was the thought process to be behind putting such a high budget for this one neighborhood versus it seems to be significantly higher for art for this one neighborhood than I've seen for any other neighborhood for any park or any other um, any other amenity, quite frankly, like I'm not seeing it happen in Johnson Lakes or Aaron Ridge North or anything like that. So what was the thought process between behind putting such a huge amount of money to in this one area?
Um, hi, Counselor Hughes. Um, we actually just allocated a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to Element Park in Aaron Ridge North.
Okay.
That was for a mosaic tile wall. And in our last project request, we also allocated I don't remember the exact amount. I think it was two hundred thousand to the Red Willow Park Extension Project. Um, so currently, what we're trying to do with our public art collection is spread it out across the city instead of having it fully focused downtown. Um, we have a lot of artworks downtown, which is great, but we would like to bring some artwork to other neighborhoods and newer developments. Um, and there's great opportunities for us to partner in capital projects uh in those new builds.
Okay, one more question. The secret park, secret park, wh- where is this? Where is the secret park?
We're not sure yet. Just be that. So we're calling it Secret Park. This came from um Arts Development Committee Advisory, actually, this idea. Because Albert has so many amazing secret parks, you know, it's like a clue board game. You go through a neighborhood and you find a pathway that leads to a don't realize is there if you're not a community member. Um, so we thought it would be a great opportunity to draw attention to those park spaces and uh bring an artist in to program one of those. So once we get the funding, it will be a collaboration between Parks and ADAC on uh which park we choose and uh how we go about programming that.
Okay, so it's really a surprise park. It's, we don't know where it is right now.
We'll announce it as soon as we know, but uh, yeah.
Okay, so surprise park. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Do you have anything to add to that, Emily?
Um, yeah, I was gonna jump in just on the varying scales of cost for these uh various projects we've brought forward. Um, there's a pretty wide range of the bracket. So Secret Park is fifteen thousand dollars. It's ephemeral. It's achievable. Um, it'll bring a lot of joy and engagement. And then there's sort of this rising scale of cost depending on the type of project. And that's something that we wanted to keep in mind of creating a really healthy ecosystem of public art within the community of having these ephemeral, short term or limited term projects like Secret Park or even the mural on the C Can that'll be at the recycling center, because we know murals have lifespans. Um, up to these much larger scale projects that are designed to be permanent. They're defined to be an investment for the community forever. And so it's the same with Element Park mural or mosaic tiles last forever. You can go to archaeological sites from ancient Rome and ancient Greece and still see them. And so it's being able to create these opportunities um within our community to have spaces with change and revitalization um that can switch over time. Those are the lower cost projects. And a lot of these ones that have a lot of excitement that are designed to be investments for a lifetime and longer, so.
Oh.
We have the uh the answer on what was left in the reserve uh from finance.
Suzanne's ready, okay.
Yeah, thank you. So through the Chair to Counselor Bransky, uh currently, the uh the funds in the public art reserve are two just under two hundred and eighty thousand for acquisition and six hundred and fifty for maintenance. So once this project has been committed for two twenty five, we will have just under thirty thousand uh for the for new projects and five hundred and sixty thousand for maintenance. However, keep in mind that uh for two thousand and twenty six, there will be another contribution into the reserve for public art projects. So then that will increase the project for twenty six.
Thank you so much. I do have one more question, Mayor.
Hey, uh, Counselor Hughes, you're done? All right, Counselor Bransky, go ahead.
Okay, with the two hundred thousand that's allocated to this before the project is essentially finalized, and it's mentioned that the art can change or be essentially many different things at this point. How much of that two hundred thousand dollars is actually for the art and how much is for the consulting of the artist that's chosen for that design of the project?
Uh, Counselor Bransky, it would be, um, we would hold back ten percent for contingency, so the artist's budget would be probably a hundred and seventy thousand, and that would be for the whole thing. So part of the project plan that's in the package that went out uh to ADAC as well as council includes the project plan for that. So the artist would be obligated to come onto the design team, the capital project team, to identify opportunities as part of that payment. So then they would propose those opportunities to us and we would determine which ones are viable within the location. And then that would be what they create.
Okay, and at that stage, they'd be paid that amount already, or or how is that?
So the payment would be throughout the entire project, so um we, the way it works is we create like a scope of work for the artists. It goes with their contract and they get paid in different milestones. So uh it would probably be milestone three. After community engagement, they come up with their proposals for uh what type of artworks they see in that location as a possibility. They bring that to the project team and probably ADAC. And then we would determine which ones uh make the most sense for that space. And then they would be paid for that work and that would give them uh permission to move into the next milestone. And that would be the uh detail design and engineering of that uh those projects. And then they would build them.
Okay, I appreciate you answering all these questions. To just throw this kind of money through on consent is very difficult and we need to provide to the public, you know. He worked really hard on it as well, so I appreciate all your answers. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Counselor Bransky, um, you're the rep on the Arts Development Advisory Committee. Do you want to make the motion? Because that's the end of questions.
Sure, I can make the motion.
Thanks.
Oh, dear. Okay. You know what, Mayor? I'll have to move it on because I I can't read the paper in front of me. Uh, I don't know if you know, but I'm, uh, yeah.
No, that's okay. Anyone else? Counsel Counselor Jolly is willing to do it. Go ahead.
That ninety thousand be withdrawn from the Public Art Reserve Maintenance Fund to support public art maintenance and appraisal projects. And that two hundred and fifty thousand be withdrawn from the Public Art Reserve to support three public art projects to begin in late twenty twenty five, early twenty twenty six.
Thank you. Any comments?
Um, I'm I'm delighted to see this in front of us. Um, you know, Mr. Fletcher, I'm very impressed that that your team is started starting to work kind of across departments to embed bed public art into our community. Um, it it brings incredible vibrancy and and I'm so thankful for ADAC for really being thoughtful about your recommendations and and understanding the impact of impact of spreading out that art ac- across the the city. So thank you so much for that. And thanks, Counselor Bransky, for sitting on this committee. I know you've been on there for for a few years now and um it's uh it's great to have you there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else on debate? See, now I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. Eight point six was on consent.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Emily. Um, eight point six, it's eight point six, yeah, was that a hundred and thirty two thousand be funded from the Internal Audit Steering Committee budget to implement the cybersecurity audit recommendations directed by the Internal Audit Committee, passed on consent. And now we're into nine point one, which is the City of St. Albert Recreation Cost Share Agreement um with Sturgeon County. And Danielle is here, sorry, Denise. To present, Denise.
Oh, my neighbor, it beholds me, so thank you, uh, Mayor and Council for allowing me to be here today to talk a little bit about the Recreation Cost Share Agreement with Sturgeon County. Just to give you a bit of an overview and history, if you'll remember, in two thousand and twenty three, the City of St. Albert and Sturgeon County entered into a recreation cost share agreement to ensure a collaborative approach to funding inter municipal recreational services accessed in St. Albert by residents of Sturgeon County. The rec- current Recreation Cost Share Agreement is effective through March of two thousand twenty six and has fostered a strong collaborative relationship between administrations of both municipalities. The proposed extension will support continued recreation cost sharing during the development of the intergovernmental collaborative frameworks and ensuring uh service continuity and fiscal stability. So administration is now seeking council's authorization for the C A O to enter into an extension of the current agreement maintaining existing terms with inflationary adjustments through two thousand twenty nine. And therefore, we've provided you the following motion to consider that the C A O be authorized to approve and enter into extension amending Recreation Cost Share Agreement with Sturgeon County on terms and conditions acceptable to the C A O. And with that, I can take any questions you might have.
Uh, any questions? Sorry, I was terms acceptable to C A O. Hopefully, they're acceptable to council, but it's actually, it's good. Counselor Mackay.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, thanks for the backgrounder. Thanks for all the different scenarios and couldbe's. Um. Can you kind of expand a little bit on, so is it just because we had a previous three year agreement that we thought that they'd take advantage of a three year additional? I I realize they both went over election, but I mean, there could be significant changes because the whole concept around uh ICFs could change shortly. Is there any advantage of just maybe signing a one year or a two year versus a three year, or was that just not even part of the negotiation?
There were some discussions, I think, um, right? At the end of the day, um, the ICF will codify, you know, how we collaborate. Um, the specifics of the rec. Cost Sharing Agreement are really based on our understanding of the relative usage, right? That the the cost benefit or the benefit to St. Albert and Sturgeon County residents. Um, that that's unlikely to change based on how we frame our collaboration. It also gives us time to continue to improve our data collection, to understand the scope and scale of movement across the the relative municipal boundaries. And so we believe that three years is is an optimum timeframe for that to move forward. Please go ahead and jump on through.
Yeah, I um through the chair, I don't really have more to add to that, other than I think it gives us the time to just work through the ICF process is really what it does. Um, and our governmental, intergovernmental affairs team is working on that project, which is a larger project for the municipality. So certainly gives us the time and space to work through that.
Okay, thanks. I I I appreciate the thought that went in behind kind of the different structures. Just my history, I'm still a little bruised by this, so um, I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Anyone else with questions? See, now anyone want to make the motion? Counselor Broadhead, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That Chief Administrative Officer be authorized to approve and enter into an extension amending recreation cost sharing agreement with Sturgeon County on the terms and conditions acceptable to the C A O.
Any opening comments?
I mean, the the backgrounder was fairly, um, you know, direct about uh what was intended here in the uh three year extension. And uh the city manager just just explained why. So I don't have anything to add to that.
Okay, anyone else? Go get us a good deal. That's all. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes unanimously. Uh, Fowler Way Project Land Purchase, Mr. Sean Willis. Virtual, okay.
He is virtual.
Go ahead, whatever you're ready.
Thank you very much. Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to present today. Uh, my name is Sean Willis. I'm a transportation planning engineer here at the City of St. Albert. So administration is currently working through preliminary design of the future Fowler Way arterial road between Regimbin Drive and St. Albert Trail, which requires negotiations with ver- various landowners for the purchase of the necessary road right away. Discussions with landowners are in various stages with some negotiations nearing completion, including the property associated with today's request. Land acquisition is enabled and funded through the previously approved capital budget specifically set up for the purchase of right away associated with future Fowler Way. At this time, we are seeking to purchase right away from the north side of the Nouveau neighborhood, uh, which is known legally as section eighteen Township fifty four, range twenty five, west of the fourth meridian. The purchase price of seven hundred and twenty seven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, which is based upon an agreed upon unit rate cost with the Building Industry and Land Development Association, falls within the approved capital budget. However, as per council policy, C dash C A O dash zero one, because the value exceeds four hundred and ninety nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety nine dollars, the value also exceeds the the C A O's authority and requires council approval. It is noted that these land acquisition costs are applicable to offsite levy charges and expected to be reimbursed. In lieu of cash, a portion of the land cost is being offset by the developer against their offsite levies payable for development agreements executed this year. Therefore, we are before you today recommending that the Chief Administrative Officer be authorized to acquire on behalf of the City of St. Albert portions of the lands legally described as section eighteen Township twenty or fifty four, range twenty five west of the fourth meridian at a purchase price of seven hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars, six hundred and fifty, with the source of funding being the previously approved capital budget for Fowler Way land acquisitions. Thank you for your time, and we can open the floor to questions now.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. Counselor Kilik has a question.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to clarify when it said it's within the offsite levy program. Um, when I look back in the documentation, it said it was fifty percent. Was offsite leavable? Is is that correct, or did I read some history wrong?
Uh, you know what? I will have to pass that over to uh to our offsite levy specialist, Abram, I believe, on this one.
Hi, yeah, thank you for your question. Uh, yeah, so in terms of the whole project for Fowler Way, uh, right now the O S L model has it as fifty percent municipality for fifty percent developer O S L share.
Okay, so it's just fifty percent then. Um, and the other the other question was, what? What is the total budget that we have approved for land purchases? And is this in, because last last time we looked at it, land was said to be going up significantly in price. We had to increase the budget, but I I must admit, I've lost track of what is the the actual budget dollar that we have for land acquisitions? And how much have we used? Um, like, are are we gonna run out of money before we've got all the land bought? Are we gonna have to increase the budget again? So where where are we at with that?
I can take a stab at that question. So thank you for the question, Counselor Kilik, to the Chair. Uh, at this point in time, there's a specific budget setup, uh, the project number, I believe, is four two three, four two three. And the budget associated with that is around four point four million dollars, of which we're still working with almost the full contingency of that, I believe. Because we are uh still early days in terms of purchasing uh properties. There were two properties purchased previously, but that was out of a different budget and that was further to the east. So you're looking at about four point four million, uh, of which this is, of course, the seven hundred and twenty seven thousand. Uh, no guarantees that we're not going to need more. It is all through negotiations. So uh other than the lands that we're dealing with, uh, developers and there's a set price, so we'll have to see as we progress. But um, yeah, there, that's that's where we stand right now.
So we we think we can, even with this higher purchase price, we can stay within budget uh, four point four million the way we've got it set right now.
The way we're set right now, I would say that we're we're in good shape. Um, and then as we progress with more purchases. The way we're set right now, I would say that we're, we're in good shape. Um, and then as we progress with more purchases, we'll have a better clearer picture of how things are playing out.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? I'm seeing none. Does anyone want to make this motion? Council Killik, go ahead.
That the chief administrative officer is authorized to acquire on behalf of the city of St. Albert portions of the land legally. Described as Meridian four range twenty-five township fifty-four. Section eighteen at purchase price of seven hundred and twenty-seven doll and six hundred and fifty dollars. For the source of funding being the previously approved capital budget for land acquisitions. For what Fowler Way project, project four two three, four two three. Upon contractual terms and conditions satisfactory to the C A O.
All right, any opening comments on that?
Uh, Fowler Way is going to be a great project when it's all done and you can't build a road without the land. So uh, this is a important piece that uh, will be one piece of the puzzle and I'm glad to hear that. We are hopeful um, and on track to try and keep it within uh, the approved budget.
Anyone else in debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed. Passes unanimously. All right, we are on to, there is no emergent items on our agenda. We have counselor updates. Um, does anyone object if we flip over to twelve point one? Because I know there's, there's people in the gallery waiting for this motion. Does anyone object to that? Seeing none, are you okay with that, Nellie pushing it up? Okay, so go ahead and read it in and then we'll come back to council updates after.
Thanks. I'm actually gonna read in alternative one. So that's uh, that the St. Albert Soccer Association's request is outlined in their June seventeen, twenty twenty-five council presentation be considered by council within ninety days after. SASSA at its own expense has provided the city with an independent financial review based on criteria mutually established by SASSA and the city. Um, of an operating business case and a capital plan including costing based on current environmental and geotech studies and municipal building standards and policies and confirmation of project sightings. And uh, statements of support from adjacent and other real rec park tenants.
All right, sorry. Uh, before I accept that, I'll open it up for questions of anyone of either Counselor Jolly or of administration. Counselor Hughes, is that, that's your, okay, go ahead. Yeah.
Sorry, just hit the wrong button there. Um, so to administration. First of all, thank you, Counselor Jolly, for the alternative motion. I'm hoping that that was what you were gonna bring forward. Um. So with um, active communities, they were asking for a grant and then they were gonna find the rest of the funding themselves. With this motion, would that also be? An option um, when it comes back? Is that the city will simply provide assistance, but not necessarily? I know that the request is that we fully um, take out the one on their behalf. But I'm just wondering, when we look at this, it's still gonna be, that could still be an option on the table that that could be discussed. I'm assuming the answer is yes. I just wanted confirmation.
Uh, through the chair to Counselor Hughes, absolutely, that will be an option. So we'll bring forward through this um, return to council on a, on a ninety-day turnaround. It's, it's mirrored very much to the A C A um, motion that was made um, couple of years back. So we would absolutely bring back all of the information, including um. I guess all the, all the factors to be considered on the funding and the financing component, and then it's for council to make an informed decision. So we'll bring back alternatives and options for council to consider and we'll do the review on of um, the whole project in that, in that realm.
Cause the only thing I'm seeing missing, and I'm not sure if it's just kind of implied, is that with um, active communities, it was, we were provided, provided you could find out the additional funding yourself. And um, that's not being proposed right now, is that they would come back and find their own funding themselves. So I'm just trying to figure out, I guess I know that's not their request, but then I'm just trying to like. Like, I guess that'd be council's decision at the time if they want to put a contingency, if they were to provide a grant or something like that, right? I'm just going, walking this through my head, I'm thinking it's probably not a problem we have to deal with right now.
No, I, I think you've hit the nail on the head, Counselor, right? I, I think we'll, we'll look at the option space going forward. I think I certainly don't want to put words in SAS's mouth, but. Um, you know, their, their cash flow and the capital required to do some of these things is a concern for them, right? And so I think we take a look more holistically and have those collaborative discussions before we come back to council.
Yeah, the cash flow is a concern for us too. We're taking on the loan their behalf. Okay, that's it. Thank you for questions. That's it.
That's a broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I, I too appreciate the alternative one being brought forward. Uh, it gives us uh, an opportunity to. I deal with this particular request in similar way that we did with A C A. Uh, there was some significant difference and I think I just wanna. I may be asking the same question that Counselor Hughes did. Uh, let me ask it in my own way. If there is uh, financing uh, being requested of the city. From the background or the minute that uh, city financing and debt is taken on, then the city has to own the asset. Is, is that a conversation that's gonna happen? Further on down the line here, or how is that gonna play out?
Uh, through the chair to Counselor um, Broadhead. So certainly we'll look at the whole project in the holistic manner that SAS has brought it forward. We'll do all of the assessments and then we'll bring back the information and, and it is based on the fact that if the financing was provided by the city, which again is not our normal, um. I guess our, our operating model. Um, but if that were to be provided by the city, it would be an asset owned by the city. So then we'd have to work through the logistics of what that, those considerations would be as well. And so we'll bring back all of the information to give a really robust report to council so that you can make an informed decision on how you want to proceed.
Yeah, fair enough, because that's, that to me was a significant difference between the SAS ask and the A C A ask.
So that, that, that is correct. And, and, and you know, the, the SAS ask did specifically state that the city would own the infrastructure and they would look for a, a long-term lease as. The, the baseline, but it is very different from the two models for sure.
Right, fair enough. Thank you very much.
Sure, Counselor Killik.
Uh, thank you. Uh, just wanting to get a sense here of, uh, based on the A C A scenario for their. Uh, basically the same criteria. How, how long did that take from the time we asked them? I'm, I'm, I'm almost afraid to ask that question, but I, I do want to get a sense and I'm, I'm more asking for. Um, members in the audience uh, from SASA to, so they know what.
Yeah, yeah, through the chair to Counselor Killik, that's a tough one, cause there is a number of nuances with that project that are against. Every project is a little bit different.
For sure.
So just respecting that that this is a little bit different. I guess for us, the reason that the um, alternative number one made sense was it did mirror a previous kind of, even though it was a different project, a previous. Motion that council considered, it was very consistent. The other component of this is that it, it works at the pace that SASA wants to work at. So when we would. After council makes a decision today, we'll regroup with SASA and talk through process and next steps. But if they want to advance the project quicker, we'll walk through what those, those timelines and the steps that need to happen will be. And then as quickly as they can get it back to us, then it's a ninety-day counter for us to get back to council. So as quick or as slow as they can move those pieces, that's what we'll work with them on. So hard to say on the, on the A C U A one, cause it was a, a different process and a different kind of nuance to how they brought that.
For sure, but we've had that experience and at least. Have, have a bit of an understanding of what to go through.
Yeah, absolutely.
The only other comment is, I, I think sighting is S I T E I N G for sighting, not the other kind of sighting, but. I did read the backgrounder.
All right, I see no further questions, so accept your motion, Counselor Jolly.
Thank you. Um, you know, this is an exciting sport that is growing in St. Albert. It's an accessible sport and, and um. I look forward to hearing more from this very important community partner about this project and about ways the, the city can partner to make this a reality. That's all I have.
Counselor Hughes.
Thank you. I just forgot one thing, so I'm just gonna remember to mention this to administration. Um, I've heard that the number of people who are St. Albert residents who would be using the facility is quite low. And that the, the club has a high number of participants that don't live in the city. So I would love to just, when you do this analysis, to include, have that included as to. How many people who live in St. Albert are actually part of the club that would be um, using this facility? Because I realize that most people in SASA would not be using the facility. So if we can just include that to it, just so that council has a broader perspective about the impact, that would be helpful as well. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else on debate? Um, I'll just. Add that everyone's quite happy that your alternate motion sort of mirrors what we did with. A C A, but I, I honestly see a huge difference between St. Albert Soccer Association and A C A. A C A was a brand new entity, had not proven themselves. Soccer Association has been around for ever. The years, um, uh, have been a trusted and secure partner with our rec department for years. And I just wanted to remind everybody of that. So, you know, we had asked for those financials from A C A because. They were new and we didn't really understand what they were trying to achieve. It was a very different model. Um, and, and I, I said it on, when they first presented, but. We have made a commitment through a council motion to continue to work with St. Albert Soccer. On more facilities because they were not included in the amenity site. So happy to support this. So Anthony Nichols. Here, here. Call for the vote. Motion closes and that passes unanimously. Sorry to make you guys wait. All right, let's go back to um. The council updates. Why don't we start with the two online? Counselor Hughes?
I haven't had any meetings um, since the last update.
Okay, Counselor Bermanzki.
Okay, uh, I've had a few meetings. So we had the um. We did another update to the Sturgeon River Watershed Alliance. We had a previous meeting that with a consultant that we didn't quite finish. So there was additional items that we ended up doing, uh, actually the same day as the Alberta Municipalities mid-date. So we uh, were still working on uh, designing a, a new land acknowledgement that suits the, the Sturgeon Watershed Alliance, which still hasn't been completed. We talked about um, uh, the A C P grant and expect it September twenty twenty-five. That we, and the flow and lake levels and everything they've been doing with that grant. We talked about the um, highlights of the updates to the um. Designed policies in the, in the new projects for that grant. And again, that was a fairly short meeting, so that's about it. It was more about trying to finish that land acknowledgement. We've got the Arts uh, Committee, of course. And again, uh, I, you know, I'd like to thank the, the committee for, you know, discussing all those projects that park related. Cause it was quite a, quite a bit of um, funding asked for and a lot of discussion there. But again, I think there's clarity for the Arts Committee and it ended where it ended today. On the North Saskatchewan Watershed Alliance, it was our uh, annual, annual general meeting. So the new board was selected at that meeting and projections for the new year. We had some updates of what the youth council that's working with the North Saskatchewan Watershed Alliance has, has um, created. And projects that they're working on in the future. We did, uh, we had a state of the watershed update, conservation, international adapted F H I indicators. We talked about uh, in a uh. N S R B water management roadmap and four-year project on hy- hydrological models. Regional Lake Stewardship Youth Water Council, their project from last year was a comic book and this year they have um. A, a new activity kit that they're providing to schools. So they're getting kids involved in, in all these projects. So that's good news. We have a, they mentioned a series that's coming up, A River Runs Through It, and that'll be released soon. Uh, that's a movie that will talk about the, the, the North Saskatchewan River and all that it has to offer and all that it's, you know, it's provided throughout history. So again, lots of environmental stuff and uh, long meeting. And I think, oh, and our environmental committee, we did a tour. We do that the last meeting of the season. So we went out to Community Gardens. We went and saw the uh, Medicine Wheel uh, that was, was. A grant project provided to Lois Hall School. And we went to a um, we went to a solar project in a neighborhood, a, a, a citizen that's working on big solar projects in his home and helping his neighbor with that. And what else here? And then we went to the, the Red Willow Park and actually the. The work that's being done by the city and the real behind the real businesses where that park and green space was essentially destroyed. And we had a, a picture provided to the group of an aerial view of what the land used to look like back in history and. How it was completely cleared and how that's regrowing now and the different things that are. Being worked on in that area to clean it up and protect our river and bring it back to its home state. Lots of environmental stuff and art. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too have not had any assigned committee meetings in the last.
No E M R B audit?
No, E M R B by audit, no.
Thank you. We're good? Did somebody just log on?
Are we good?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I had a homeland housing board meeting and um, we actually brought in a facilitator to do our. Uh, strategic plan session for kind of the next three years. So um. Really productive meeting and, and I look forward to seeing our, our new strat plan kind of in the next couple of months. I'll share that when I get it.
Anything else from Homeland?
Not as part of a meeting.
But if you go ahead.
I, well, well, I think the, the funding um, from the, the provincial and federal governments were announced. And now I believe the city is kind of working on finalizing a few details so that we can get the shovels in the ground for St. Thomas Street. So. And it's exciting.
That's awesome. Yeah. Counselor Killik.
Uh, thank you. Um, from Edmonton, salutes our uh. Last meeting before taking summer break, uh, we reviewed our uh, strategic plan. And again, as any planning session where you do little dots and you have twenty-five people in the room, it's hard to get consensus, but. Uh, we came up with our three uh, priorities, very, very much uh, around community engagement. Uh, support for troops and families and uh, broadening the awareness. Of what Edmonton Salutes does in, in both our, all of our committee, all of our communities outside of Edmonton. Uh, in particular with the business, uh, within the businesses as well. So uh, we did land on, on that and that's being draft drafted up. Um, updating of the policy and strategic plan is a requirement by the city of Edmonton. So uh, it was a, a needed step. It was best done because we were in person out at the Military Family Resource Center. Um, so it worked really well. And uh. We also took a look at our policy reviews on finance and event support. So those were updated as well. Were, were drafted for, uh, comments were provided for drafting and updating. And we approved funding for the Christmas concert that takes place at the Wind Spear. Um, by the Military Artillery Band, which is a great concert. Tickets are free. Um, and the in, increase in funding was because the increase in cost of the Wind Spear have almost uh. Doubled in the la- from the last year. So um, we were able to prioritize that funding and make sure that that event happens again.
And you represented Salutes at the Change of Command for.
Change.
Not one field ambulance, one health services.
Yeah.
That was fun.
Which is another great event.
Yeah. All right, Counselor Mackay.
Uh, policing committee is in recess for the summer. Um, no real updates unless Mr. Fletcher has an update in relation to the detachment commander. Process, no, okay. Um, and then for the arrow, I've been extraordinarily busy. Uh, but on July eleventh, last uh, Friday, we had a, we held a special meeting of the board. And uh, passed a notice of motion is related to uh, striking an independent third-party review of our arrow utilities' financial viability and also. Our current board structure. So um. and also our current board structure. So, uh, that's gonna, uh, pretty much consume my time for the entire summer because it's pretty much, um, falls just to the board, just to maintain some independence. And, um, so I will keep, um, counsel advised.
And your deputy mayor in the summer.
And that wouldn't be a problem if the mayor would stay home.
Okay, that is it for updates. We are now on to the last council motion, which is Counsel Broadhead's on an accessibility advisory committee. So I'll let you read it in. You're, you're slightly changing it.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Uh, so the original motion that I put forward, while my intent was, uh, was, I think honorable, what I wrote, uh, was fairly prescriptive and that while it certainly wasn't my intent, uh, it, uh, it took administration down a much deeper path than I intended. So, in discussion with my favorite legal advisor, uh, I came up with a different, uh, uh, motion and I'll read it in now. That administration prepare for council's consideration to bylaw to create a council accessibility advisory committee with the requisite terms of reference and budget estimate to establish an accessible, accessibility committee founded on principles broadly based on the recommendations found in the city's twenty eighteen universal access plan.
Yeah, that's good. Before I accept it, I'll open it up for questions. Counsel Jolly, you can start.
Yeah, thank you. So Counsel Broadhead, I'm just curious about, I guess why you chose not to go with the alternative proposed by administration?
I'd, good question. And, and the reason why is, uh, to include accessibility and, and an advisory committee within the context of, of the whole idea scope. I'd see the committee as being fairly hands-on and fairly specific to the issues of facing the accessibility committee or community. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit about it because this, it actually brought me to read this report again from eight years ago. And, um, I just, I, I truly believe that if it's part of the idea, uh, project, um, it won't, idea is so huge and accessibility and the needs of the accessibility community are huge enough on their own. Just believe that there needs to be a, a committee advising council on this issue alone. And they'll have enough work to do, uh, the way it is. That's, that's my heart behind it and why I continue to want to bring forward the accessibility advisory committee.
Are you good, Counsel Jolly? Okay. Counselor Hughes.
Okay, sorry. All of a sudden my screen changed on me. So how does this motion differ from what you originally proposed, Counsel Broadhead?
So the, the Ontario, um, if I read the original one, it was based on, advisory committees established in the province of Ontario. And Ontario has, is one of four or five provinces that actually have accessible, uh, uh, legislation and it's fairly prescriptive in, in what this, uh, committee would do to the point of reviewing actual engineering documents for buildings and those sorts of things. And so it would be a significant body of work. Now, whether or not this commi, this committee goes there or not, I believe is something that the, the, the committee in, in working with administration can actually work out in terms of what actually works for them and for our community. But it had it stood the way that I had originally, uh, anticipated reading the motion in, then the whole sort of view of how Ontario put their accessible, uh, legislation together would have been taken into consideration. And I thought that might have been a bridge too far, at least initially, uh, coming out of the gate here.
Okay. So who would you see as committee members then? Would they be like, like people with disabilities or how, who would you, how would we qualify people to, um, be on this committee?
People with disabilities, people, uh, with lived experience of people with disabilities. So caregivers, organizations that deal particularly with, um, at the accessible community like the CNIB, uh, in particular. Um, so that's who I would see being recruited to be part of the accessibility committee. People who can speak knowledge lead to it.
Because I'm thinking like, we have the seniors committee, for example. And I think that one of the intentions behind the seniors committee was to provide input on this. And yet I don't think admin has ever come to the seniors committee to really deliberately ask them about accessibility issues. So I'm, I guess I'm looking at administration right now, although I'm looking at council, but I'm looking to administration to like, there's a lot of opportunities with this, but we also have not even accessed our current committees to provide that kind of an input. So I'm, I'm just not sure if we're creating a committee that's going to come back to the, similar to what the seniors have had where they have often for several years struggled to provide input because they were just never asked.
Yep. Thank you, counselor. I, I would say that, that's certainly a pitfall of creation of community is, is, or a, of a committee. Um, I think that would be incumbent upon council and us to ensure that both in terms of its design, its scope, uh, authorities and responsibilities, and then ultimately a work plan that we avoided that from happening.
So would there be an opportunity still at this point, even before this committee is coming forward to actually use the seniors committee? A lot of people with seniors either know or have their own challenges, physical challenges to get around, for example. So like if we look to see how many times this could even be relevantly, like not relevantly, but like just used, like there's only so many capital projects, for example. So as we're doing capital projects, there'd be an opportunity for questions, but we've yet to ever ask seniors for any of that information. So is it just because we haven't thought of it? Because I mean, a number of times that we've asked for input from administration, the committee has asked for regularly over the years um, to just ask us what we think. And yet it hasn't happened. So this is my major concern is we're not even using our current committees to use this. And yet we're trying to commit to do another one. I mean, I'm trying to figure out why we, if, if we have this information, why we haven't approached our current committees to get their input.
Well, I, I, I don't know if I have an answer for you right now, Counselor Hughes, to say, um, that this new committee um, has been brought forward by a motion by a member of counselor. It's not been forward by administration. Uh, in terms of how we leverage current committees, that's an ongoing discussion as we try and, and optimize and make them useful, uh, for folks. So I could take your feedback certainly and, and we can look at the way ahead on that.
If this was to pass, could we still be using the seniors and actually as a prompt, as a trigger to actually also discuss a second level of opinion? I mean, obviously there'd be questions on that, but would there still be opportunity for the other committees then to be prompted to ask for questions or input?
I, I suppose conceptually, counselor, we, we don't know what the, the committee would look like. I would be loath to duplicate, um, effort across multiple committees. But a, again, this is so nascent that, that I don't know if I can answer your question.
Okay. Cause I'm also thinking that we already have other committees of professionals who provide input, um, at the social level. Um, so Mike, I'm not sure if it's you, Paula Fletcher or not, but would this almost be redundant in that we already have opportunities for committees to provide input? And then we also have other committees of professionals who provide input on a regular basis who meet. So I know, well, this is a council and I don't know, maybe, I'm not sure who to answer this question, but I know this is a council direction, but I'm just not sure if we actually are just, we are creating duplication because we already have this, but just in a more scattered form.
Counselor Hughes, I think that is more, not really a question. It's, it's an opinion of some people would disagree that the seniors and youth have input on accessibility and some might. So I think that's kind of an individual of the seven of us to answer that question in their own head. But what Counsel Broadhead is asking for is just kind of the framework and the kind of questions you're asking now will kind of be developed through the terms of reference process.
Okay. I guess these are the questions that it's not just about seniors. They also have other committees, like of professionals that already meet to discuss the challenges of people, um, within the FCSS and the other realms. So I'm, I'm trying to figure if it was worth the effort of the administration to go through this if we already have it and we just didn't realize it.
Into debate, Counselor Hughes?
I'm not trying to debate. I'm trying to figure out if, if what I'm assuming is correct or not. If those other committees that like, there's a professional, I can't remember the name of it. I was like the, the group, they meet, the professionals that meet, like they're with FCSS monthly and discuss issues. And I'm trying to determine if between that and this, if we actually have redundancy or if we don't. So I'm not trying to debate. I'm trying to understand, Mayor.
Do you have anyone from FCSS online?
We, we certainly do. Ms. Wilkie, perhaps, uh, you can provide some context.
True to Counselor Hughes, I'm not sure if you're referring to Community Services Advisory Committee or if you're speaking about the Directors Network.
Yeah.
Um, so Directors Network, we do have the FCSS funded agencies come together as well as some additional agencies from across the community. They often speak to their particular services and events and programs, but there isn't a, a specific discussion around accessibility concerns. Um, there is always opportunities to look at that specific to the organizations that we work with that do support those with lived experience, but we don't specifically have a committee right now that includes representation from, um, from those with lived experience. They are those that advocate for.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. That's it for now. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? Seeing none, I'll accept your motion, Counsel Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A great question, uh, Counselor Hughes. And, and in response, I would say that, uh, five provinces in our country have actually wrote legislation to actually define committees like this because it doesn't work if you don't have people who actually have lived experience in the accessible, uh, community, actually given, uh, feedback. We got, we got, uh, professionals all over the place giving advice. But there's a reason why not only this report, but five provinces have said you need a, a committee that actually will focus on the needs of our, uh, of our, uh, accessible, accessible and disabled community. Let me, let me talk a little bit about, it actually made me rewrite, reread this report and it was, it was well done. I gotta tell you. Let me just read a couple of statements out of here as to why. So recognizing differences, people with disabilities not to be conceived as or treated as a homogeneous population. Even the access requirements of one disability prop, uh, population can differ to a large extent from another disability population. The old homogeneous oriented adage of looking at the world through a disability lens is a fallacy. For a more accurate heterogeneous metaphor would be looking at the world through a disability kaleidoscope. Madam Mayor, I've talked to numbers of people in our community who, who deal daily with either their own disability or people in their families that have disabilities. And the minute I say we should have a accessibility, uh, advisory committee, th- they jump to the table and say, yes, we should have had this for a long time ago. I, I love the report that we had about the, uh, playground the other day. It, it spoke to the very large issues of dealing with people in our, uh, community that have difficulty. But they, that they should indeed have the opportunity to participate in, in the quality of life that St. Albert offers, just like everybody else. And so I believe it's, it's incumbent upon council to, to make the effort to, uh, to embrace the issues that are facing citizens within our community and work to, uh, address, uh, their needs. I want to, uh, dignity of access. Dignity and equity go hand in hand. And there is true universality and dignity when one has choices and potentials for various levels of independent mobility, communication, overall functionality in one's community. I would love to be able to say that that's, that's true for everybody within our community. And, uh, I'm not the only one that hears it from, uh, from, uh, the disabled, uh, community that we could do a little bit better. And I think if we, this is a start. The, the idea program is, is a much larger program. That needs to go as well. Because the accessibility community is a subset. But it also needs to have its own intentional, uh, working group to address their needs. And that's why I brought forward the motion around creating this particular, uh, uh, committee. I don't think it's going to be without work. It may not meet, uh, every two weeks. It may not meet every month. Maybe it meets quarterly. Uh, but that's why I think the, uh, the motion is broad enough to allow us to move into what will work for the city of St. Albert and meet the, the needs of our community members. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel Jolly.
Thank you. So, uh, Counsel Broadhead, it's rare that we disagree on this kind of motion. Um, in, in my day job, I, I work in the healthcare and accessibility world. And I know the folks we serve and collaborate with want meaningful inclusion, um, not inclusion in, in another group. Um, going through UBC ZDI program kind of over the last year also taught me that, that real inclusion is critical. So I'm, I'm voting against this motion because I believe these perspectives um, deserve more than a, a siloed advisory group. Um, people with lived experience and expertise and accessibility should be embedded throughout our organization that should be across all committees. I know I've talked about this with the seniors committee, but, but through all of them um, should be throughout administration, um, and, and frankly on council. Um, I, I also agree with Counselor Hughes that, um, we, we really risk creating kind of some of the challenges that, that we've experienced through the seniors advisory committee, um, by creating this group. Um, you know, I know that we're seeking meaningful engagement. Um, but we've, we've struggled to do that in the seniors advisory committee. And, and there's a, there's a lot more that we could be do, doing in that area. Um, we've also committed to an idea strategy that, that really aims to integrate inclusion, diversity, equity and accessibility into everything that we do. Um, I, I want to see where that work is headed before creating a separate committee that, that risks isolating these voices instead of amplifying them um, across our administrative systems. Thank you. That's all I have.
Counselor Bremanski.
Thank you. Um, I will be supporting this. Thank you, Counsel Broadhead for putting this forward. And the nice thing about having a committee is that that committee can be, can be ever-changing. You know, we, we choose people to sit on committees and you know, um, I've run into people recently that were, you know, injured in, in an accident, injured by, by drugs, injured, their life has changed overnight. Something happened and their life is different. So this, these will be the choices and the voices that we can hear. And, um, and I look forward to, to evolving a committee that's always evolving with new voices and as many voices as possible. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Counselor Hughes.
Yeah. Assuming this motion passes, I would love to use the seniors committee as a trial to see what we could get for how it could be possibly used for the accessibility committee before, um, the committee's actually formed, like actually start using it to see how, um, is a guinea pig to see if it's necessary and how often it would be required, because it's really is depend upon capital projects happening and whether they're replacement RMR or new. That would be where it comes in. So I would, I would love to just see how it would actually transition and if we actually have the demand necessary to, um, have even quarterly meetings. I'm not sure. But the idea of having it is great, Counselor Broadhead, in that many of the innovations that have made life better for everybody came from recognizing the needs of people who had accessibility issues. Remote control came from people who could not get up for the television. You have like the push buttons to open the doors. Remote control came from people who could not get up for the television. You have like the push buttons to open the doors. Um, but people who have their hands full, their strollers, it matters. Even the curb launches, it's. Obviously helps for people who have. A wheelchairs, but they also help for people with young children or trying to again push their their kids through a stroller. There's people who don't have obvious disabilities that are still. Grateful for the innovations that have come up because we recognize that there were people who had needs. Uh, that needed to be accommodated. And as a result, everybody else also moved up in the quality of life as a result. So. The idea is great. I would just love to see how. It would come into fruition to justify having it move forward as it is. And I'm really not sure if your original motion of saying. It was more prescriptive because it involved the capital process. If it isn't directly involved in the capital process, I'm not really sure what. Input they'd be providing that would change the outcome. So um I'm just, when I look at this, that's kind of, I'm I'm torn, but if this does move forward, I would like, I would love to actually see us do it. Because it's gonna take some time for this to come forward as legislative for all of the requirements of this motion and we could use that time to um. Kind of finesse what would have justify having another committee. That's it. Thank you.
Counsel Mackay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Counsel Broadhead, for putting the motion forward and and willing to look at uh. Some of the changes because uh someone who lives with somebody with limited mobility and uh. As Counsel Bremansky has identified, you just don't know what happens in a blink of an eye and how that can change. Um, your perspective on how you um see a simple thing like a height of a sidewalk. Or the ability to uh open a door. So um he the aspect of having uh lived experience is very important. But I I I am supporting the the the. Motion as written only because it sets out the consideration of a bylaw. That creates some of the terms of reference because I think one of the. Problems that we might run into is creating expectations that we just can't achieve or expect administration to accomplish. So. Uh, using the framework of the Universal Access Plan is a is a great. Uh, starting point or even uh implementation process, but I would hate to have a. Uh, committee uh established and then um. Falter because of the expectations were a little onerous on them. So, but I'm willing to certainly because of. My lived experience uh around someone with a challenge that uh this is something that we should look at and I'm willing to look at that.
All right, anything to close, Counsel Broadhead?
Yeah. Sometimes you have to um talk to somebody who actually. Understands the issue. I'll 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 tell you my story. So I was at a conference in Ottawa here three months ago and we were going through a. A uh capital project and one of the issues was is that uh. There was being a bridge built uh where there was a requirement to uh delineate a. Bike path from the um. Automobile automobile uh driving path, but because it was a bridge structure, they couldn't put a raised curb. So the initial thought by the experts was to use something similar. That they define the edge of a uh uh platform on the LRT, you know, the sort of the yellow. Uh, bumpy stuff and uh they thought that would work just fine. However, if you're a blind person with a cane, you can't tell the difference between that and broken pavement. And so when they went to the accessible community, the CNIB in this particular case. They actually went and talked to people that had used. A white cane. And they came up with a whole different design that they could actually tell the difference. And so that that now they didn't have a raised curb, but they did in fact had something. That defined for the blind people that they were going in someplace where they shouldn't and it defined their. The uh the sidewalk from the driving lane and from the uh bike lane. Just uh one example that they would have put something in place as defined by the experts that they thought would work. But in practical terms, didn't actually do the job for for the accessible community. That's what I see happening here with a with an accessibility community, practical applications like. We have disabled people in our community, not many. But because our disabled transit bus is too big, it can't get in. How do we brave that? To uh the the level of of consciousness within our community that we start to do something about that. Those sorts of things. I just think that we owe it to the people in our community to do the effort. To allow them to participate in our society as much as able-bodied people. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed and that motion passes is uh by majority with Counsel Jolly opposed. Uh, in from requests, notice of motion and announcements. I know. You have a notice of motion, Counsel Killig, right? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, that notwithstanding council policy C dash CC dash zero five. Administration undertake the necessary actions to rename St. Anne Promenade. To Veterans Way with this work to be completed by November eleventh, twenty twenty five. And funded up to fifteen thousand from the Capital Reserve.
Okay, so we'll probably debate that first meeting back and and the fall. Were there any other IRs notice of motions? And the only announcement I had was made by Counsel Jolly, which four point five million from the province for twenty-two St. Toms. So that was good news. Counselor Counselor Fletcher. Mr. Fletcher does have some stuff for us to talk about in camera, so I need a motion to go in camera. Counsel Mackay, go ahead, thank you.
That council move in camera to have a confidential dialogue with the chief administrative officer pursuant to section twenty-nine one A of the Access to Information Act.
Call for the vote.
No longer called the Freedom of Information Act.
Did you not notice last week?
No.
That's changed since June eleventh.
So have I.
Is it closed? We're good? Uh, voting's closed and that's unanimous. All right, so we'll meet in council lounge.